...facility right now. And if it needs helping the stuff move, I'll volunteer my hours. I'm not asking for any fee or anything. Basically, help move this agenda along because it's right in Marycrest. It's right where I live. So I can basically be right there as the heart of what they're asking. I see the hurt when someone gets killed. I see the hurt when someone loses a loved one. And I know that when you have an alleviate way of reducing the stress, basically, it helps people be more tentative to mindful thinking instead of just stressful reactions. So again, I'm asking if that can be considered and if someone can get in touch with me to make this happen because the Holy Spirit has spoken to me and I don't want to be Jonah. I want to be that man of action that helps alleviate the stress in all the community, starting with Marycrest. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm embarrassed because I signed not knowing, I didn't read what I signed. So I really don't have anything to ask of the council this evening. I beg please, I beg my pardon for being, not paying attention. So, but I'm going to pay attention to all of you this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good to see you. Brenda Irvin?
She was just signing.
Was it, and if you, if you just signed in by accident, that's okay too, so?
Yes, good evening. My name is Brenda Irvin. And I did, someone told me that I needed to sign in as I came in. But I am delighted to be here this evening, to listen to the agenda this evening and see how we can work together to move some things forward, as the bishop said, in, on the north side. We want to see some improvements over there. So I'm here to listen and learn tonight. So thank you.
There's two other names. Did you, Mary and Elsie, did you want to sign it? Did you sign in by accident or did you want to speak?
Hello, everyone. I have a question. I would like to know, in Kankakee area in Illinois, as a matter of fact, why is there any more rehab and care facilities for the people, you know, that don't have places to live or family to help them, you know, to do the things that they need to for their, for their care? I have a cousin that's way over in Indiana. They didn't find anywhere in Illinois where he could be for his care. I'd like to know what can be done about that.
S.C. Smith? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I do want to make a quick announcement. This council is streaming, but it's currently not on Channel 4. We are recording it, so we hopefully can replay that at a later time on Channel 4. But it is streaming online. We're having some difficulties with Boxcast or Channel 4 right now. So just wanted to let everybody know that. And anybody who's watching on YouTube or Facebook, you can see this happening now, but that's why you can't see it on Channel 4. We're going to move on to item five, roll call. City Council?
Jones?
Present.
Johnson?
Here.
Cobb?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Navarez?
Here.
Marzak?
Present.
Swanson?
Here.
Tully?
Here.
Ocinga?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Malone Marshall?
Present.
Prude?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
We do have a call. Department heads?
Kidwell?
Here.
Hyde?
Here.
Rogers?
Here.
Kubel?
Present.
Landwear?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Lopez?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Bigash?
Present.
Nelson?
Easley?
Here.
King?
Here.
Roswell?
Brewer Watson?
Here.
Thank you.
We do have a resolution under motions of resolutions tonight for the seventh grade boys' basketball team. If it's okay with the council, I'd like to have an amendment to move item 13A to item 6A.
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones and a second from Alderman Prude to move item 13A to 6A in the agenda. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
The amended agenda is approved. We'll move on to item six. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 18th, 2025?
I'll make that motion, Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Tully. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman O'Brien. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions? Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
The minutes from Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 are approved. We'll move on to item 6A.
We have a resolution honoring the Kankakee Junior High School seventh grade boys' basketball team for their successful and historic season.
So if at this time, if we can invite the coaches and the players up to the front.
Okay. I'm going to read to all of you the resolution honoring the Kankakee Junior High School seventh grade boys' basketball team for their successful and historic season. Whereas the city of Kankakee takes great pride in the accomplishments of its youth and recognizes the value of hard work, perseverance, and teamwork in the pursuit of excellence in sports and life, and whereas the Kankakee Junior High School seventh grade boys' basketball team has demonstrated exceptional athleticism, discipline, and sportsmanship throughout their season. And whereas, under the guidance of coaches Jalani Clark, James Stevenson, Taiwan Bender, the team achieved a remarkable 19-2 record, finishing their season with a fourth-place finish in the Illinois Elementary School Association Class 7-4A State Tournament, marking a historic achievement for the program. And whereas the Kankakee Junior High School seventh grade boys' basketball team entered the state tournament with an undefeated 15-0 record, further solidifying their dedication to excellence. And whereas the team won a regional championship by defeating Frankfurt Hickory Creek and a sectional championship by defeating Champagne Jefferson. And whereas, the team's success has brought great pride to the city of Kankakee, and they serve as an inspiration to future athletes and students in our community. And whereas, the players of the seventh grade boys' basketball team displayed outstanding teamwork, skill, and sportsmanship throughout the season, and the city of Kankakee proudly acknowledges their individual and collective achievements. And whereas, the city of Kankakee would like to acknowledge the seventh grade boys' basketball team, the members Nizera Johnson, Jair Rosenthal, Micah Cunningham, Taiwan Herron, Jalani Duncan, Kamarian Williams, Stanley Turner, Najee Bailey, Tyron Turner, Hayden McElroy, Marques Taylor, Mashari Boyd, Landon Stevenson, and Christopher Fitzpatrick. Therefore, it be resolved by Mayor Christopher W. Curtis and the City Council of the city of Kankakee that the Kankakee Junior High School seventh grade boys' basketball team is hereby honored and congratulated for their historic season and fourth-place finish at the IESA State Tournament, adopted this third day of March 2025.
First, I would like to start off by saying thank you to some of the people that are in this room. Even if you weren't in this room, you had the opportunity to see the growth of these young men, not only on the court, but in the classroom, as a coaching staff. One of the things we wanted to do was strive to make them students first before athletes would start in the classroom, and with discipline. And as you can tell, it's hard to go 15 and 0, but with their dedication and commitment to the program, we've seen that flourish throughout the season. So we're excited for this group of young men. We're excited for them to return next year and hope to be holding the first-place trophy next season for the state of Illinois. So thank you, guys, for...
Just want to say, it's pretty cool, that trophy you're handling there, holding there. Myself and City Manager Kubel, we coach in IESA, and that's kind of one of our goals to get that. So we haven't quite got there yet, but to see that's pretty cool. And I'm going to challenge you if, as you come back next year in eighth grade, there's a, kind of a little known, unknown fact, I should say, is when a high school team wins a state championship, you can put that sign on the entryways into your city on the state routes. The other two things that are allowed for that is IESA also allows state championship plaques to be put up also on the roadway. So next year, strive for that, number one, and hopefully we can deliver you a, a nice large sign that can be put on all the city entrances that come into the city. So congratulations and good luck.
Great job.
Good job. Oh. Yeah. Start somewhere.
Guess we need a motion.
Oh. We didn't hear that, did we? We got so excited about everything, we forgot one major part. And clerk, that's why she's good at her job, so. Is there a motion to accept the resolution honoring the Kankakee Boys' 7A Team?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll just, we'll say unanimous across the board for both. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, gentlemen. This time, we're going to move on to item seven, 7A, under petitions.
PB 2025-2-1, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a domestic violence shelter care facility located at 2391 East Court Street in Kankakee.
Director King, this, if you could kind of walk us through this, this conditional use permit and what we have here.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a domestic violence shelter care facility at 2391 East Court Street. We all know it as Harbor House. Harbor House is proposing to construct an expansion. It's a 12,130 square foot building to provide additional shelter rooms and office space. The applicant's also proposing to construct an expansion to the surface parking lot and accessory garage and related stormwater facilities. They, we held the hearing on February 11th at Planning Board. Prior to that meeting, I had been reached out to by one of the owners to the east of the property who was really just concerned there might be impact to the, they would be accessing their driveway, which they're not, and he had no further questions. And then somebody spoke at the hearing in support of the conditional use permit. The Planning Board did recommend approval with conditions by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you, Director. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that will allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Tully. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Alderman Tully. Is there any questions or comments?
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say, I'm so excited that they're continuing to expand because one thing about Harbor House, they're doing young men work with so much domestic violence going on, and I just want to really commend them, and hopefully we can continue to support them in what they're doing on the east side, and that they don't, not only do they affect the east side, but they're affecting throughout the whole county. And it's, and it's great work, and I'm just, hopefully, if everything goes right, they can keep expanding, and hopefully we can keep on helping and supporting them. Because, you know, a lot of times, we don't have to physically do the work, and somebody is doing it. You don't always have to start something, but you can jump on and help those that are doing it. So I thank this council, Planning Board, and everyone for, let's get moving and where we can support them, and we can continue to make our city safer, and hopefully nobody gets battered, but at the same time, if it does happen, we have a place that, you know, a lot of times, the mothers and families can go. So I just wanted to say that and give the kudos to Harbor House.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 7B.
PB 2025-2-2, an ordinance rezoning certain property located with the city, within the city limits of Kankakee, Kankakee County, Illinois, from its current zoning classification of commercial to residential zoning. South Entrance Avenue, West Hickory Street, West Merchant Street, West Station Street, and South Washington Avenue.
We've done many of these over time, but I will have Director King, if you can just highlight very quickly, and Planning Board's recommendation.
Sure. Again, this is, we've done many of these. It's commercial in this area, all of which is residential. There are a variety of residential zoning districts being recommended, R1, R2, and R3, to closely match the land use with the zoning district. Ahead of the hearing, also on February 11th, 2025, I had a number of calls from residents in the area and property owners, many of which were supportive. One was just clarifying that her home had been deconverted to a single-family home, so we matched that zoning. And then there was a gentleman that came and had testimony at the hearing who really just wanted to talk about the pros and cons of commercial versus residential zoning, but ultimately, he was supportive of the rezoning to residential for his investment purposes. The Planning Board did recommend approval of the rezoning with a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So move, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next, we're going to move on to Communications, item 8A.
We have a presentation by Lauderbach &amp; Amon regarding the Kankakee Fire and Police Actuarial Report.
I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Kubel, if you could introduce our represented tonight and what they're presenting.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. Tonight, we are fortunate enough to have Todd Schroeder here from Lauderbach &amp; Amon. He is going to go over our actuarial report with the police and fire funds. Now that we have made our big decisions and the funds have all of the POB proceeds, he will be passing out the report that we've gone over in years past. In the past, we've had Bob Reitz here, you might remember. Tonight, we're honored to have Todd. Todd is actually in charge of actuarial services at Lauderbach &amp; Amon, so it's really an honor to have him here tonight, and we'll go over these results, and I think there's a lot of good information, and I'm excited to hear.
All right, well, thank you for having me out here tonight. As Elizabeth mentioned, Todd Schroeder from Lauderbach &amp; Amon, and we do the actuarial evaluations for the police and fire pension funds. Overall, I think we produce over 200 pages of actuarial reporting across five reports. What we've tried to do is put a presentation together here to just kind of boil down some of the key points related to funding for the police and fire pension funds, especially with some of the big changes year over year from April 30, 2023, to April 30, 2024. So I'll jump in and go through some of the highlights in this presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have as well. If you look at page two of the presentation, this is going to give us really our bottom-line results for the year across the two pension funds when it comes to funding. If you look at the right-hand column, that's the total between the two pension funds. We're looking at a recommended contribution for the current year of about $3.3 million. And as you see from that second line, that's a significant decrease from the prior year. And the main reason for the decrease is the bond proceeds that went into the pension funds to pay off a lot of the unfunded liability that existed in the prior year. So that represented about a 57% decrease year over year in the recommended contribution that we're making. If you look at the third line, so both funds right now are sitting at about 90, right around 90% funded. If you look at that third line, what that translates to is about $17 million in unfunded liability, which is a decrease from about 72 million from the year prior to that. And again, that's largely due to the bond proceeds that came in during fiscal, or represented for fiscal 2024 as part of this reporting. If you look at the next page, what we do each year is we try to give you just a little bit of the story year over year of how things changed from a contribution perspective within the, from the recommended contribution within the two pension funds. So if you look at the right-hand column, the way these contributions are calculated, we do expect them to increase on an annual basis, and the goal is to have that increase be commensurate with the expected pay increases for the underlying firefighters and police officers in the plan. So as pay increases going forward, the assumption is the underlying revenues are increasing, and then this contribution would increase around the same rate. If you look at that top line, that represents about $260,000 between the two pension funds. So year over year, if everything happened exactly as expected, we would have had a $260,000 increase in the contribution. The ones that happened after line one, give us a picture of things that happened year over year that differs from our expectations and that creates adjustments to these contributions. For example, line two is pay increases coming in from fiscal '23 to fiscal '24, pay increases came in higher than expected for the pension fund members, so we're projecting a little bit higher benefits at retirement for these folks. That means roughly about a $58,000 increase in contribution related to those projected additional benefits as part of this process. The next line is actuarial experience. It's about a $30,000 increase between the two pension funds. Actuarial experience can be anything from new hires coming into the pension fund, so we're now asking for contributions on their behalf. It could be retirements happening earlier or later than expected, new terminations, things like that that happen within the population year over year. There are a couple pages in this presentation and also in your reports that have some detail on some of those population movements, if anybody's interested in looking into that. Investment returns greater than expected, and in this case, slightly less than expected. There's an increase of about $5,000 across the two pension funds, so that's very close to expectations. One of the things we do in this process for funding purposes is we look at investment returns over a five-year period. And the goal of looking at it over a five-year period is just to wipe out some of the volatility that exists year over year in our investment market. So this worked out real well this year with a minor increase in the contribution related to investment experience. And finally, the last line, and this is where the bond proceeds and the impact of the bond proceeds are going to come in, we had a decrease of almost $5 million between the two pension funds in the recommended contribution related to contributions coming in higher than expected. So expected would be the recommendations from the prior year, and then the actual contributions, including the tax dollars that came in, as well as the bond proceeds that came in that are reflected in this year's report. Before I go forward, any questions on the changes year over year in contribution? On page four, just a couple things, and this is where, another place where we'll see the impact of where the bonds came in. What we're doing when we calculate a contribution and make a recommendation each year is there's two things we're looking at. One thing is the active member population. So for any active member in the police pension fund or in the fire pension fund, we're asking for a contribution on their behalf each year of their working career. So ideally, when they retire, the money will be in the pension fund, ready to pay them their pension benefits. If you look at this page, that top line, which is called labeled "normal costs," that represents these active member contributions, and that's right around $1.5 million of the recommendation between the funds. Now, to the extent those dollars are not in the pension fund, as of each date that we do our valuation, that we would expect for these active members or for the inactive members in the pension fund, we have a payment towards unfunded liability, which is the second line in this. So right now, there's about 10% of the liability is unfunded between the two pension funds. So we have a recommended contribution of about $1.8 million towards that unfunded liability between the two pension funds, and that's the second line on this page, again, getting us back to our $3.3 million recommendation. So right now, between the regular annual cost of the active members and the payment towards unfunded liability, you're sitting somewhere close to a 50-50 ratio. Last year, the payment for the active members was about 15% to 20% of the recommendation. The remaining 80% to 85% last year was related to unfunded liability, and that's down, obviously, again, because of the bond proceeds that went in. I'm going to skip pages five through eight. This is some more just demographic detail, if you'd like to read on things that happened between the pension funds, new retirements, and things like that year over year. On page nine, this is something we like to include in our evaluation. We like to give you a little bit of a look ahead. When you're putting money into the pension fund on an annual basis, when you're making, putting bond proceeds into the pension fund, at the end of the day, what you're trying to do is fund for future benefit payments. And this page gives us a look at where benefit payments are, and this is obviously the key cash outflow from the pension fund. We're trying to match with all the cash inflows that we talk about. Looking at this page, there's about $8.7 million that goes out annually from the two pension funds on a current basis. We expect that number to go up between $10 and $11 million of cash going out from the two pension funds in the next five years, and in the next 10 years, that should be between $12 and $13 million going out from the pension funds. Those are below-average increase... you're sitting somewhere close to a 50-50 ratio. Last year, the payment for the active members was about 15% to 20% of the recommendation. The remaining 80% to 85% last year was related to unfunded liability, and that's down, obviously, again, because of the bond proceeds that went in. I'm going to skip pages five through eight. This is some more just demographic detail, if you'd like to read on things that happened between the pension funds, new retirements, and things like that year over year. On page nine, this is something we like to include in our valuation. We like to give you a little bit of a look ahead. When you're putting money into the pension fund on an annual basis, when you're making, putting bond proceeds into the pension fund, at the end of the day, what you're trying to do is fund for future benefit payments. And this page gives us a look at where benefit payments are, and this is obviously the key cash outflow from the pension fund. We're trying to match with all the cash inflows that we talk about. Looking at this page, there's about $8.7 million that goes out annually from the two pension funds on a current basis. We expect that number to go up between $10 and $11 million of cash going out from the two pension funds in the next five years. And in the next 10 years, that should be between $12 and $13 million going out from the pension funds. Those are below-average increase rates compared to the rest of our Illinois police and fire clients that we look at. And the reason for that is the pension funds, if you look at those top two lines, there are a lot of inactive members already in the pension funds. So these pension funds are a bit more mature, meaning we don't expect as many benefit payment increases on a going-forward basis. And then page 10, and page 10 will be, page 10 and 11 will be the last two pages that I cover here, so we're near the end. Just a couple of things related to risk management with the pension funds that we like to talk about on an annual basis. First of all, in last year's report and last year's presentation, there was a comment related to assets not being sufficient to cover the inactive liability in the pension funds. That comment is now gone from this page. This is where it was last year. And again, that's part of getting the funds funded up through that bond process. So now, the money that we expect to have to pay to all the current inactive members, retirees, disabled members, surviving spouses in the pension fund is now sitting in the pension fund. So that comment is gone. Right now, if you look at the fire pension fund, our benefit payments are about 6.5% of assets. On the police side, they're about 5.5% of assets. And obviously, those came down year over year as well. Generally, we like to see those be under 8% of assets, so the funds are in a better position than they were a year ago at this time related to that metric. What that means is you don't have to keep as much money liquid and affect the long-term investment returns in the pension fund when you're making benefit payments. And then finally, page 11, and you might see this in your audit, you might see this in your city financial statements for the pension funds. This is just a change in your assets year over year. If you look at the second line, this is where the contributions came in between the two pension funds year over year. This is where those bond proceeds are reflected in the process for this year. So there's dollars in of over $63 million in the current year. As the box on the right notes, the investment returns were right around expectation for both pension funds. Fire was at 7.26% investment return versus an assumption of 6.75%, so above the 6.75. And police was at 6.53%, just under the 6.75% expectation, and this is for fiscal 2024. The remainder of this report has, there's an alternative contribution. The state of Illinois, everything we've talked about so far is based on our recommendation that you pay 100% of the unfunded liability in some fashion over time. So our contribution recommendation includes the regular annual cost for the active members, plus a payment towards that remaining $17 million of unfunded liability that exists. The state requires you to be 90% funded by 2040 currently, and that rule has changed over the years and could certainly change again at some point in the near future. But right now, that's the bogey, is 90% by 2040. So we have some information in this presentation. On the next page, related to an alternative contribution, which is just following those state minimum parameters. It's not something we necessarily recommend, but in order to fulfill the obligation to the state of Illinois, these are the contribution parameters that are in place. The remainder of the presentation has a few summary slides on some of the information that's more related to the financial statement reporting and the Government Accounting Standards Board information. I can walk through that if you want, or I can pause here and take questions on the contribution side.
Alderman Baron.
Just wanted to check on one thing you said there. So the recommended contribution you're giving is based upon reaching 100%?
That's correct.
Okay. And the alternative is for 90%, which is the state minimum?
That's correct, yeah. And the state one is about, is right around half of the recommendation right now. And it's basically that, on the page where we had the two pieces of the contribution, the second piece is zero because 90%, you're already there. So they have no recommended contribution towards unfunded liability.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. You mentioned, I believe it's page 11, where previously, in past years, there was a comment about the potential insolvency of the fund based on the large amount of unfunded liabilities there, and that's gone this year. That's the result of the pension obligation bonds that bring us to roughly 90% funding. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the metrics from a risk perspective, so the way pension funding works, if you hire a new active today, we want to get all the money into the fund while they're working, and then the money will be there when they're retired, and so the fund takes care of paying the retirees, and then the city continues to pay for current active members. So one of the metrics we look at is, is there enough money to pay all the current retirees, spouses, disabled members in the pension fund? That comment in past years was no. This year, the answer is yes, there is enough.
Thank you. And regarding the returns there, that, I guess it's still a relatively new entity that does invest those funds. No longer, our local fire and police pension funds, right? That's the state entity, is that correct?
That's correct. There's two state boards, a separate one for police, and that's why you saw some different return experience in here. The fire and police have separate state boards that take on the full investment responsibility and fiduciary responsibility related to the investment of the pension assets. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? City manager or comptroller, anything you want to add to it, or?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just add that this is basically the synopsis of those reports that we talked about when we were setting the levy, just to kind of circle back. So this is, he's giving the summary of those reports. We use those numbers when we did our levy. Those much lower recommended contributions were what were used when we put that levy together this year because of the fact that we're 90% funded, which is just a percentage that I still never thought I would say, working for the city of Kankakee. So it's just, it's a really big deal to me to see these numbers and see these percentages and know all the things that Todd told us tonight. And then I'm with Alderman O'Brien, I think it was page 10 or 11, when he said that about the, you know, our comments, the whole entire time I've worked here were insolvency. That's what we saw every single time we saw these reports. That's where we were. And now to have those removed, it's just really an exciting day. So thank you so much for the presentation this evening.
Thank you for having me out.
Do you, Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you taking the time today. We're going to move on to item eight B.
Pocerty's Medical Clinic is requesting street closure of the 100th block of South Chicago Avenue to host their Back to School Health Fair on Saturday, August 2nd, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve this request?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Prude. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tali.
Aye.
Ocinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
The request for street closure is approved. Next is item nine, Standing Committees, item nine A.
Building and Code Committee for Thursday, January 16th, 2025.
Alderman Malone Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor. The Building and Code Enforcement Committee was held on, meeting was held on January 16th. We did have a quorum. We had, our minutes for December 19th were approved. Our bills for December, the December of 2024, in the amount of $12,357.68 were approved. We also had a few questions about the bills. We saw that the building inspections were very high, but it was actually the bills for September, October, and November were combined, and that's why they were $5,100. We also noted that the animal control bill for November was $2,315, which we have been monitoring, monitoring that animal control due to the fact that we're possibly going to go into a contract. The director's report noted that there were 87 permits in December totaling $22,084.55 under old business. We did receive an intergovernmental agreement for animal and rabies control services, and we are reviewing that and will continue to discuss it. The committee requested the last two years of the animal control bills for review. And we also said that, noted that there were no cats included, you know, as far as picking up cats was not included in this contract. The committee discussed, including language in the contract, to ensure the animal pickup fees paid by the city are recouped from the animal owner. And we also revisited the discussion about the difference between the animal-owned charges and the charges by the city by animal control. The committee also requested animal control fees be scheduled for review and discussion. Under new business, there was an update on the code positions. Director Nelson filled a property inspection position, and a property inspector resigned. Current property inspector was promoted to building inspector, and two building inspectors, but still two property inspectors are needed. The committee discussed the large bulk and the multiple large bulk items being picked up. Alderwoman Malone Marshall stated the appreciation for the work done in the, on North Evergreen, the trailer and the tent has been removed from the backyard. And the committee also required and discussed if an ordinance exists for snow removal on sidewalks. There was no need for an executive session, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:08. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Malone Marshall. Next is item nine B.
Public Safety for Tuesday, February 4th, 2025.
Alderman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. The meeting on the public safety was called to order on February 4th by Chairman Larry Ozinga. There were no public comments. The guest presented that night was Mayor Curtis, Mayor Chris Curtis. Presentations were made by Kankakee United Virus Prevention, Troy Lloyd, Assistant to Director Johnny Wicks of the Kankakee Virus Prevention Department. The presentation was very informative. We have two staff members, full-time servants of roughly 25,000 constituents who have had violence presented against them. The department have helped six felons obtain jobs over the last year, and they are doing good. The department is looking to add a youth leader to support what they are doing right now, and they are hoping that the youth will give a different perspective on youth violence. A $500 stipend will be given to the youth leader, but they must be 18 years of age. The full presentation is available on the city public website for 2/4/2025. There was no business, and there was no new business. And the Kankakee Police Department report was presented by Chief Chris Kitwell. He informed us that we have 65 officers that were, and we're budgeted for 67. We have 38 patrol officers, eight in investigations, and two in K-Meg. We have one school resource officer, four in administration, four in our POM unit, and three in the academy, two in field training, one in moose and abatement, and one on light duty. Zero sergeants in training, and one on working comp. Kankakee PD recovered great 16 firearms, and K-Meg recovered 14. So that's a lot of firearms in the month of January. Kankakee Police Department, overtime, were affected by the January 1st homicide funerals and repasses for the families that were affected. Extra officers were called in to provide securities for these events, which entail two weekends. We currently have approximately 175 Vodokra cameras deployed throughout the city. The KPD is leasing eight flock LPR cameras. All officers are in compliance with ILE, TSB, and CPR training. It's currently taking place for all members. Overtime hours totaled 396 hours, equaling $27,622.16 from December 29th, 2024 through January 12th, 2025. Bills for the month totaled $112,501.73. Motion to approve the bills was made by Alderman. Cops seconded by Alderman. Navarez and the bills were paid. Onto the fire department. The fire department report was presented by Chief Brian LaRoche. Chief LaRoche informed us that we have 49 firefighters, while we are budgeted for 51. We have 41 on shift, two in administration, one fire inspector, one in training, one in community risk reduction. We have two administrative assistants, four part-time interns, six workers on working comp, bringing our active personnel down to 43. The bills for the month totaled $77,084.16. Motion was made by Alderman Jones and seconded by Alderwoman Swanson, and the bills were approved. Overtime for the month was slightly decreased from the previous months, from December. 520.27 hours were assigned, costing $27,057.2. Vehicle repairs, vehicle maintenance conducted during the month was $2,824.27, with the majority of the expenses was just general maintenance to the fleet. The new tower and fire engine purchases are still moving forward. We are expecting delivery of the fire engine in late December 2026, with the aerial slated to be in the fall of 2027. Approval was given to purchase a used ambulance from a Kendry Township in the amount of $55,000. This vehicle will be an additional reserved ambulance. Chief LaRoche stated we should consider purchasing a new ambulance. For ambulance four is a 2002 and is used only sparingly. At some point, Chief LaRoche said it needs to be taken out of service completely. There were 716 calls for the month of January. There were 455 medical calls, and the fire department ended the 2024 year with 600 more total calls for service in 2024 compared to 2023. It was the busiest year in KFD history. Fire loss, we had five fires totaling $77,000 for the month of January, and fire billing collected was for 2024, was $22,841.83. EMS billing collected in 2024 totaled $4,255,489.99. This almost brings us to the end. KFD continues their regular training for the firefighters, and many have completed the classes in Fire Academy, as well as courses and various training, and they continue to have firefighters prepared for many situations that may arise and will affect our safety and ours and our community. We had no need for executive sessions. There were, though Alderman comments, motion to adjourn came, and it was seconded by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Jones. The time for adjournment was 6:04. Alderman Larry Ozinga, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, prepared this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jones. We'll move on to item 10, Report of Officers, item 10 A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $835,001.65.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for the city of Kankakee?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the report of officers. Let's pay the bills in the amount of $835,001.65.
There were a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
A second from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there any questions or comments regarding the report of officers for the city of Kankakee? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tali.
Aye.
Ocinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
I abstain as to check 83649 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, check 83661, and check 3881 to Pigish Engineering, check 83664 to Skylar Avenue Properties, and checks 3878, and check 1053 to Gross, Coates, Abraham, Eschel, Marion, and Garretsey, each to avoid a potential conflict.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
The report of officers for the city of Kankakee are approved. Next is item 10 B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $355,359.57.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
No second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Ocinga. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tali.
Aye.
Ocinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check 36108 to Gordon Electric Supply, 36115 to Kankakee Ace Hardware, 36117 to Kankakee Truck Equipment, 36126 to PSI Construction, ease to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Report of Officers for ESU are approved. Next we'll move on to item 11, Unfinished Business, item 11A.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of the 2025 to 2029 Draft Consolidated Plan for the Community Development Block Grant administered by the City of Kankakee Economic Community Development Agency.
So we had this on our last agenda two weeks ago for your review. It is a resolution. So if you had any questions or comments, I'm going to turn it over to Director Brewer Watson. She has a couple of comments on it if you have any questions for her.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind you of this lengthy planning process that we've already been doing and undergoing for many months. There was a public hearing on January 17th. We've shared this with all the housing agencies for comment. We did receive updated data and comments from the Housing Authority. The plan was then edited to display that information in there. We presented it at Community Development Committee Meeting. We brought it to you for first reading to give you some time with it. Have not received any other comments other than some grammar stuff here and there throughout the past eight weeks. So we've fixed those. The comment that I do want to make is until there is a federal budget in place, I do want to just consider that these numbers may change. So we may need to come back and do an amendment. But these are the numbers as of today for the Community Development Block Grant and the projects and the goals that we have. So I just wanted to make sure that we understood the process, the public hearing, and first reading, and now final approval. We will submit to HUD for the next five years of securing funding and do that on time and then we'll wait for the federal budget.
Thank you, Director. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the consolidated plan?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Baron, is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
The resolution is approved. We'll move on to item 12, New Business, item 12A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231 entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee. Two handicap parking signs established at 1292 West Station Street.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally, is there a second?
Second.
There was a second from Alderman Osinga. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading that would allow for the passage tonight?
I'll make that motion, Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12B.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231 entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee. Handicaps parking signs established at 211 North Eighth Avenue.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis, is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Alderman Navarez. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Coordinance is approved. Next is item 12C.
An ordinance amending Chapter 8, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 11, Donation Dropbox Registration of the Kankakee Municipal Code.
So this, you have before you some amendments that were made through committee. The concern we had here was we had several of these drop boxes that were popping up in closely, close areas. There was some concern about, a lot of them are located on the front of properties. And so I believe most of the changes here is it does raise the fee, let's start with. It reduces the number of boxes allowed from 30 down to 14, allowing two per ward, two locations per ward. They still have to be with 1,500 feet apart from each other. So even if you have something that's in the third ward and the fourth ward, there still has to be a 15 foot radius from there. It raises the fee for the box, per box from $100 to $250. It also provides that the box must be located along the side of the building or to the rear of the building. So no more, no, not out in front of the building anywhere. And that will help with aesthetics and appearances. Even today I noticed there's a box on Jeffrey. Ton of clothes just laying all around the box right now, looks unsightly. And then I think that was the majority of the changes, if I remember that correctly. So I'm going to ask in-house counsel, Landwear, is there anything I missed there or anything that you want to add to this?
I know you covered it.
Okay, sounds good. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Tally. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading that would allow for passage?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Tally. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12D.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21, Licenses Generally of the Kankakee Municipal Code by adding Article 3, Cratom, Novel, Synthetic, and Psychoactive Drug Businesses Prohibited.
So this also has gone through ordinance committee, several meetings. I do want to note, we expect that there'll probably be a lot of communities within Kankakee County that'll be following this lead. They were kind of looking to the city to see how we would react. As I've talked about before, this is something that the state of Illinois is actually looking at banning also. It was in the veto session, they'll have to, they'll probably have to refile it and come in spring session. It might not make it to the fall session. Right now, the House is on board with it, I'm sorry, the Senate is on board with it. The House is split between Governor Pritzker and Mayor Johnson from Chicago. Governor Pritzker would like to ban these. Mayor Johnson's concerned about the sales tax loss of revenue in Chicago, so there's a little bit of a battle going on there. Indiana has banned it, I believe, a couple of other states. We've had some neighboring, I shouldn't say neighboring communities, communities up north that have also banned it. If you don't know what this is, this is the stuff you'll see, it's a lot of times referred to as Delta Eight, Delta Nine, cranium. You'll see them advertised a lot in the smoke shops. The concern is, and this came out of the chiefs meetings and the coroner Guessner and some of the Pledge for Life organizations, they gave a presentation. These are unregulated vaping. And they have higher amounts that are, that we've seen. They've even been tested recently. All communities have had buys purchased legally across the counter and then they were testing them through Olivet Nazarene University. And the levels that had come back was pretty extremely high. They're also packaged to go after children, or I should say teenagers. They'll look like a Skittles package or a candy bar package. So they, it's an unregulated thing that's causing great harm and coroner Guessner's seeing this. So I did get two emails at late afternoon today from two national organizations that were concerned that we were banning these in the city of Kankakee. My concern is, and I highlight here, is they talked about, basically instead of banning it, implementing regulations. And the problem is, as a city, we don't regulate this. This is regulated on a state level. Their concern was, they want to ensure that customers have safe, tested, and properly labeled products, but that we should just be responsible for the regulations of it rather than banning it. But they even admit themselves that if it's properly regulated, it should have less than 2% of the total plant product in it and not meet certain levels. The things that we're hearing, and Chief Kidwell, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the meetings we're hearing, the levels are coming way above even what this national organization is recommending here. But Chief, if you want to add anything in?
No, you're right. We just heard, I heard the same meeting, was that the same meeting you were at with coroner Guessner? And he said the rates were alarming, we didn't find out what the rates were. But I know Olivet's doing the testing. As the mayor said, K-Meg, they went to every outlet in Kankakee and surrounding areas. They purchased the product legally and they sent it to Olivet. And at their laboratory, they tested it and that's what we based our ordinance on. So I think it's something that we really need. I know coroner Guessner's pushing for it big time.
This may be, you know, we're kind of hoping the state does ban this. This may be a short lived ordinance at the city because if the state does it, then we won't need it. But in the meantime, our fear was it could be till, as I said, maybe the spring session could get to the fall session before this happens. So we want to be proactive in trying to prevent any damage to not only the youth and the adults, but anybody in the community. So as I know, this went through ordinance, I believe, several meetings and it was recommended out of ordinance committee to move forward. So before you tonight, you have the ordinance, is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Osinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prude?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Is there any questions or comments? Alderman Marzak.
I'd just like to add, we're not the first community doing this. You know, Orland, Lockport, Patavia, some other communities up north are doing this. So, you know, it's not like we're the first doing this.
Alderman Jones?
I would like to commend coroner Guessner because I know he's, I mean, it hurts him. He tries so hard to try not to deal with what he has to deal with. And with the Delta Eight and all of them numbers adding up, I don't really understand it. But one thing, I don't want our children just to constantly keep, not just getting high. want our children just to constantly keep, not just getting high, but he says, I guess it's killing them because there's so much in that, whatever it is. And I mean, if it means saving one life, I mean, hey, you know, I'm with this 100%. And I'm glad that it went through ordinance, and we were able to get this thing pushed through. I hope it goes through the state, and we can get rid of it. I'm just telling you right now. So I totally agree with it, 100%.
And the state's even looking at that. If they get through there, if they start to regulate it, it might be, come back where it can be saleable, but it would be regulated by the state to make sure that the certain limits aren't beyond what are harmful. So... Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. So assuming this ordinance were passed tonight, would then the city notify the businesses in the city that, of the ordinance, and they would have to begin compliance?
Yes, it would be effective immediately, but we'd work with them. I was, on a short term, but yes, we would notify them.
Thank you.
Mayor.
I'm sorry. In-house counsel, Landwear, yes.
Actually, the ordinance committee had requested that we make this effective in 30 days from its passage. So that is in the ordinance as written. So we would have time to notify all of the smoke shops that this was going to be illegal on a certain date.
I appreciate it. Thank you for the update. And again, we'll see, but I, in talking with a lot of the other chiefs from all the other communities, they were kind of looking to see how we would take the lead on this, because I think you'll see within Kankakee County, a lot of others will follow the same lead. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is motions and resolutions, and we did do, we moved item 13A, so we'll go on to 13B.
Resolution waiving competitive bidding and awarding the pharmaceutical cleanup and disposal services for the former Jeffy Drug Store contract to Midwest Environmental Consulting Services.
So this, I'm going to ask Director Brewer Watson, she's involved with the land bank and has been leading the charge on this here, on what's happening. I'll let her give an update on the timing and why this is needed for the former Jeffy drug building. I will add, what the total amount of this is $62,700. If I mess this up, correct me, but I believe we've got $10,000 coming from Kankakee Development Corporation downtown to help with this payment. We're going to be using $15,000 from CDBG. We'll be using $25,000 from the downtown TIF, and then the remaining $12,700 will come from the general operating fund to get this accomplished. Director Brewer Watson, do you want to kind of add about timelines and move forward?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So as you know, we, it has taken us four years to secure the deed for the land bank to own this property through a lengthy legal process. So we have some environmental work to do in this building so that we can get this in the hands of developers, potential business owners. And the cleanup is regulated by the EPA and the Illinois EPA. And throughout our legal process, being in communication with them, doing a pharmaceutical cleanup requires a lot of different certifications and insurance liability requirements and training. And so there are not as many companies in that field that are close to Kankakee. Midwest Environmental is, and so we're asking to waive that bidding. There are other companies that are out of state, but through our work with the Illinois EPA and the EPA, this is how we came to the list of who is approved. And so we've had, been talking with them. They've inspected the building. They've done all of that work and gave us estimates and have been waiting for two years now to get to this day. So once you approve this, then they will be scheduling and starting that cleanup work here pretty quickly so that we can clean up the environmental hazard in that building.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution that would allow us to sign the proposal with Midwest Environmental?
So moved.
We had a motion from Alderman Nivarez, and we had a second from Alderman Prude. Is that correct? Any questions or comments? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Director Brewer Watson, upon, once this is done, then the building would be finally able to put back into use, is that right?
Yeah, that's a great question. So this, as we do the cleanup, there's going to be an RFP, a Request for Proposals for Development and Potential Ownership. It's a very public process that the land bank will implement, and that's overseen by Dr. Crawford, who's the director of the Regional Land Bank Authority. And so that process will be very public. You can receive proposals for what potential development will take place there, or what the owner is able to do or wants to do with future business development there. So that will be happening very quickly in March as well, and that will have a few weeks of public marketing and attraction so that we can get the best proposals for that site. This is the first commercial property that the land bank has acquired and done this work with. So progress.
So this has potential to be the land bank's really big first success, commercial success story.
We've had a couple properties that we've been able to do. There's some vacant lots in the county area that are for sale through the land bank right now, but this is the biggest project and will be the biggest success story, just being able to bring a property back into tax rules and contributing to the city and hopefully future development right on our main corridor. So exciting.
Alderman Jones.
And the biggest thing, removing the eyesore.
Yes.
The biggest eyesore that's been there, man.
That's coming to you, Mayor.
Oh, man.
Give an update on that, too, is, I did go to land board, land bank board meeting and asked that, as part of the RFP, for some of the evaluation is what person can stabilize the front of the building as quickly as possible, not necessarily renovate it, but stabilize it to make sure that there is no falling brick or mortar or anything from that building so that we can take down the barricade on that sidewalk and get it looking better. We are having somebody, the land bank is actually having somebody evaluate that structure as we speak right now, because that'll be the ongoing process along with this pharmaceutical removal.
Mayor.
Alderwoman Malone Marshall.
Yes, I would just like to say that this has been a long drawn-out process, and it has gone through the courts for so long, and we have been trying to get this building cleaned out. And it's going to be just great to one day be able to remove that barrier from in front, but it has been for the safety of the citizens that that barrier has been there. And I just appreciate the city continuing to fight through to get this situation resolved. So this is a great day for the first ward. Thank you.
I'm with you. If we can get the barricade down, it'd be nice for the, through the summer.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13C.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Kankakee Valley Construction Company bid for the City Woodley Road improvements in the amount of $48,091.68.
So this, we had a bid opening last Thursday. This is over some flooding issues, kind of similar to what Country Club and Ego had, where when it rains, the water does not dissipate. We had our city engineer, engineer some plans for this. Those went out for bid. The bids came in, we had three bidders. They ranged from the low bid here of $48,091.68 to a high bid of just over $66,000. And so we're bringing the low bid to you for work, for approval tonight. Is there a motion to accept the resolution authorizing Kankakee Valley Construction as a low bidder at $48,091.68?
So moved, Mayor.
A motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Tally. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Nivarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Staying to avoid a potential conflict.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Resolution is approved. We have no need for executive session tonight. So we'll now move on to item 17, city council member comments. Alderman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say, we had a, it looked like yesterday, and I wanted to bring it up tonight, and I seen, I saw it on Facebook, some about a van that was parked down by Stevie Hunter Park, and a kid was told to come over, what have you. And they went to Facebook first, and you know, I, so I didn't really get all the gist of what was going on, but today I was able to call our deputy chief, and he let me know, and I'm real proud that they had already checked out the situation, found out what was going on with the van, because I wanted to make sure we didn't have a public safety crisis, you know, starting in our ward, because you know, kids playing, and we almost around springtime. So I want to commend KPD for dealing with that. And also, I went to the individuals that were involved. I talked to the father and the son, and everybody is all right. And it seems like, I don't, I don't know if it was anything really going on, but I guess they knew who it was or what have you. But I wanted us to know publicly that we don't have a crisis going, because you know, Facebook can sometimes take a, it can go in a whole different direction. And by the time we find out, we got eight vans chasing kids and all of that. But I just wanted to put that to rest tonight, that it has been addressed. And I wanted to thank the KPD for taking care of that situation. And also, I'm looking forward to, I know it's a lot being said about Hobby, and you know, nobody is happy about it, all right. And I'm hoping that we all understand that we'll get that thing done. Hopefully we'll never have a situation like that again. But I believe that the, just knowing construction, like I do, I believe that the asphalt plants getting ready to open up here within the next probably 30 days or so, and then we'll